I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Doctor Vogt?
Here.
Councilwoman, witness is absent this evening. Doctor Selly?
Here.
And Mr. Dangler?
Here. Could we please stand for the pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation, this Employee of the Month? Or I should say, this time Employees of the Month? Goodwill Baja Monday and... Let me add here. Oh, and Alex Kelly, please.
How are you, sir?
How you doing? Will, am I pronouncing your name right?
You got it perfect.
Will Baja Monday has been with the city of Long Branch since 2006. Alex Kelly began his employment with the city as a page, the Long Branch Public Library in 2009, and moved to the IT department in 2012. Will and Alex are the dynamic duo who handle all the IT operations for the city of Long Branch. They can be found anywhere and everywhere there is a need. They are always responsive, helpful, patient, and willing to go above and beyond whatever is asked of them. Will and Alex are particularly proud of how in 2015, excuse me, 2015, they worked on their phone, worked with our phone vendors to configure and replace all phones in all municipal locations. And in 2017, they configured and installed the new Cisco equipment on our citywide fiber network. However, one of their greatest achievements was in 2017 when they were responsible for Fort Long Branch receiving official state certification to store public records electronically, thus saving storage space and, more importantly, supporting the city's green initiative. Will and Alex also led the initiative for a new interactive website. With everyone's increased reliance on the Internet and email, Will and Alex speak efficiently and effectively. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Will and Alex, thank you for all you do. Great job. Thanks. So, we're going to have a little presentation tonight. So, we have with us our Director of Health, Mr. Sid Johnson, who's the head of our Health Department. We're very fortunate here in Long Branch to have a Health Department right here in the city where we can get quicker responses and up-to-date information. And we're also lucky to have Mr. Johnson here, who has actually 30 years of experience in the health industry. So, he's here to give us an update on the coronavirus, COVID-19, which, as many of you know, has been dominating the news lately. But before Sid speaks, I just want to say that our administration, the council, we're taking every proactive step that we can be to be prepared. And we highly recommend that residents to utilize the resources that Sid will be discussing. And I think he'll be showing a short video as well. And Sid will also be here to answer any questions that you may have in the public portion section of the meeting. So, Mr. Johnson, if you don't mind?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Good evening, everyone. So, I have some handouts in the back that speak about coronavirus, fact sheet, a keeping your home safe, and also one for who's at higher risk? And that's the elderly, right? Senior citizens, especially people with underlying chronic diseases, lung disease, diabetes, heart disease, immunocompromised people, okay? Those people are getting hit hard. And you've heard today, the man was testifying in Congress, it's not the flu, it's the flu on steroids. So, the flu, it may kill, the coronavirus may kill 10 times the number of people as the flu virus does, okay? So, last week, Governor Murphy, you've all been listening to the TV and radio, declared New Jersey a declaration of emergency. New York has the same thing. Today, the World Health Organization declared the coronavirus a pandemic. What does that mean? That means there's sustained person-to-person transmission in many countries around the world, all right? The thing with the coronavirus, it's a novel virus. You'll hear that word, "novel." That means it's a new, new virus, right? So, all people are susceptible. Nobody has immune antibodies built up, so everyone is susceptible. There is no vaccine, there is no particular treatment, medical treatment, there may be experimental things, but no defined medical treatment. It's all supportive, mostly at this point. While much remains to be unknown about the coronavirus, its impact and epidemiology, the health experts tell us that we should proceed on the assumption, okay, that the virus will spread more broadly around the world, in New Jersey, the United States, and in the community of Long Branch. So, what does that mean? It means that one of the things is most people, fortunately, for many people, the young people, we're always concerned about young people, they may not, they get sick, but they recover, all right? The ones at high risk, like I mentioned, are the people who are older adults, people who have serious chronic health conditions, right? We think that it spreads as the flu, person-to-person primarily, which means between two people are in close contact with each other. Somebody coughs, has it, the droplet is spread, you either breathe it in, or you touch a surface where the droplet's on, and then you touch your mouth, eyes, nose, this kind of thing. That's how it's transmitted. It may be, and may well be transmitted by surface. You see people disinfecting surfaces all the time. How long the virus would live on a surface is no one quite knows, all right? But you see people, as a precaution, disinfecting surfaces all the time. Let's see, okay. The other thing about the coronavirus is that it has spikes on the outside. Have you ever seen the pictures of the virus? And it appears that those spikes enable it to attach more easily to cells in your body once you get exposed to it. Symptoms to look out for after two to 14 days of exposure, if you were exposed to someone who had the disease or so, or maybe picked it up, and then the virus, and then touched your eyes and your nose, their mouth, this kind of thing, you want, it's going to be a fever, persistent cough, and a shortness of breath. It very much mirrors the cold and the flu, so it's very hard to discern what you may have. But if you have any of those conditions, we ask that you stay home, self-isolate yourself, all right? Call your healthcare provider. You will get, talk to them. As there is no treatment, there's not a lot of testing. The testing right now is that done at the hospitals, but the gatekeeper is the state. So, it's not that easy unless you have a specific, where they can rule out all other things. And then coronavirus may be the one thing that they suspect. That's going to be one where they're going to test. So, the testing is, unfortunately, it's a little limited right now. So, you want to call your doctor, and you want to get advice because you want to monitor yourself because it can go south very quickly. If you, and you'll know, you're not going to feel well at all, that's when you want to present to the ER room, okay? But call ahead to the ER room. We know from past experience that there's going to be 10 worried-well for each sick person. So, if everybody runs to the ER, you're going to overwhelm the system. So, you're going to stay home. Most people will recover staying home. And it won't be, you know, it's not going to be a vacation, but it's going to be, you're going to recover. But if you're in that high-risk group, you need to really pay attention to this. So, there's an 800 number if you want 24/7, the poison control hotline, that's in the handout. Remember, what can you do? Your mother told you, your grandmother told you. Wash your hands, frequently wash your hands. I'm meaning wash your hands. The hand sanitizer, I know it's hard to get, but if you can get hand sanitizer, use that. If you, anything over 60% alcohol in it would be, is sufficient, okay? Clean and disinfect surfaces. Bleach is an all-purpose cleaner, disinfecter. Clean means you wash with soap and water. Disinfect means you're using some kind of agent. Bleach would be a common thing, 10:1 dilution in water. And practice social distancing. In other words, don't go in large crowds. You can see where many events are being canceled, where they have 1,000 people, 4,000 people. That may become more common, even smaller gatherings. But if you can stay, or if you have six grandchildren, don't bring them over to Nana. Please, don't bring them over there. Don't expose them. Tell them they should, you know, be careful about limiting how much they go out and so forth. So, that's where we are right now, kind of all we could tell you. It is a novel. We're learning as we go along. Everything is very dynamic and changing every day. But if you see, Italy is a modern country, right? It's completely shut down, the whole country. Now, we're not there yet in the U.S. or New Jersey. I mean, we only have 23 positives and one person who has died. But it could go there. So, you will be seeing more. You've seen in New York containment areas, limiting of large events. Don't be shocked. I want you to be prepared if you start seeing those kinds. I mean, we have an emergency order in place, and you may see those kind of things. People, events being canceled, that's happening already, so forth. So, if you can, it's not too late. Stock up on supplies because of you. We are doing investigations. It's not just containment anymore, travel restrictions. It's now mitigation, which means if we can identify an infected person, we interview that person, we find out their contacts, close contacts in the last day or two, then we issue a quarantine order to those people to stay home for 14 days. And it's voluntary quarantine with self-monitoring of your temperature and so forth. But if some people violate the quarantine, it's going to be a mandatory court order to stay home, quarantine. We haven't done that in the United States in a long time. So, maybe since the flu pandemic in 1918 or smallpox. But you need to be prepared. That's where this may be going. We, what can I say? We hope for the best, but we have to plan for the worst, all right? So, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Another question?
I have no question.
And we have, if you want, it's just two minutes, the show to quick.
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. If I have to answer any question?
No, there is no sound. Sorry about that. So, just one thing about this. This, I think this slide was made maybe two or three weeks ago. So, yes, at that time, the risk was low. But we now know that there's subpopulations with much higher risk, all right? Yes, exactly. That's the image of the virus, that's right. And those are the spikes they talk about. So, one thing I forgot to mention is for the general public, they are not recommending you wear a mask or anything, all right? There's a shortage of masks anyway. So, it's unlikely that you may be able to even get any. They're saving those for the medical community, healthcare workers, and so forth. Everybody's scrambling to get supplies, so. And this is probably the best one of the bunch. Avoid contact with sick people. Cover your nose or sneeze with a tissue, into your elbow when you're, all right? Don't touch your eyes. What do we say? Clean and disinfect. And I think the last one is going to be wash your hands. Well, stay home if you get sick, all right? But talk to your healthcare provider so you can touch base with them and be in touch to get more up-to-date information, and you'll know what to look for.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the February 26 meeting.
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Consideration of ordinances, public hearing, and final consideration. This is the second reading of ordinance 1620 entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter 325 Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Long Branch, No Left Turns, Highway 36 and Grand Avenue, Parking on Willow Avenue. The ordinance was introduced on February 26, 2020. I need a motion to open to public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone, approved. If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment regarding this ordinance, please step to the mic, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will only given five minutes and may only speak once.
Want me to fix all this for you?
Huh? Thank you.
Don't use my time to fix this, all right?
Hi, Ernest McNolly. Born in Long Branch, I live in Asbury Park now. I'm also trying to be known at these meetings as Mr. Long Branch. I don't know why. But which, we're up on the one about the right-hand turn, no left turn, or about the fire department?
No, it's the no-left turn ordinance.
No-left turn?
Yes, sir.
You know, although I was born here, sometimes I forget, where is this corner? Is it next to something I would know? What happened?
7-Eleven.
Excuse me. What's your question, sir?
Yeah, is it by the 7-Eleven?
Yes.
Okay, so you want to, you want to ask vehicles, no-left turn, I guess, onto Highway 36 and Grand Avenue, parking Willow Avenue? Is it a combination thing or just the one thing?
It's two different sections of the ordinance.
I'm sorry?
There's two different sections.
Okay, the Willow Avenue and then the left turn? So, I guess, since I'm the only person who comes up, everybody's okay with doing away with that turn. In other words, right now, as it stands, you can make a left turn, and you want to amend it so that you can't, correct? And is this the meeting where you can vote on that, and it's the final reading or something?
This is, sir.
Okay, so I guess everybody's okay with it. I mean, certainly, an Asbury Park resident doesn't have any right to represent the people of Long Branch. So, if they're not here, I guess they're okay with it. The second part is Willow Avenue. What's doing there?
They're extending the.
They're extending, they're extending to no parking.
I'm sorry?
They're extending, they're extending the parking prohibited 214 feet so that it will be 214 feet from the easterly curb line of Prospect Street.
Okay. And I guess there's no residents here to have a complaint about that. You know, I always look forward to coming here. You have such an interesting audience. You know, whenever you come up and speak, you usually follow up after. And you get all the harassment online of all the people that you bring here. I think it's a disgrace, the way we all have to feel here, coming to try and help children and help the city. And the roughnecks that you bring in here always got something wise to say. So, so I guess I'm okay with it. You just going to extend it a little bit? Make it longer?
Yes.
How many feet? Are you doing that to accommodate, like, a development or an existing? What's the raison d'etre?
It's for the school.
For the school?
Safety issue for the schoolchildren, Mr. McNolly.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, I guess I'm okay with that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is the third, third reading of ordinance 1620 entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter 325 Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Long Branch, No Left Turns on Highway 36 and Grand Avenue and Parking on Willow Avenue. I need a motion to adopt the third and final reading advertised according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the second reading of ordinance 1720 entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter 45 Fire Department, the Code of City, of the Code of the City of Long Branch. The ordinance was introduced on February 26, 2020. I need a motion to open to public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding this ordinance, please step to the mic, state their name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
I'll go. So, Ernest McNolly, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, born in Long Branch, and I guess I'll speak for anyone in Long Branch who doesn't want to come up here. I don't blame them. So, we're talking about an ordinance for the fire department? Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is it for more equipment, or?
No.
Is it for assignment of chiefs and things like that?
Correct.
Correct. Do we have a list of the chiefs that are on the list to maybe be appointed? Are they people that really were put out of the city for various reasons? Are they all coming back now? Is that how we're operating now? At least if that's what rumors are. I get rumors. You can't find out much about this fire department. It operates like something out of the South Side of Chicago. Really, Mr. Renon, I'm serious. How can anybody know what's going on in this fire department? This thing is out of control. It's out of control. I mean, what are they doing? They're raising money, political things, running boozy parties and cigar parties with underage people. And they're getting caught, and no one's doing anything about it. And they think it's funny. They come here and they think it's funny. And you guys don't help out. I don't get it. Maybe I'm missing something. How long I've been telling you about that no-good holy smokes of my church property, and you don't do anything about it? Now you all got caught in West Long Branch. So, let's see who gets brought into all this, all the smiling characters here that like to come and mouth off, and that are really abusing children and doing horrible things in this city. And nobody's doing anything about it. Drunk cops, criminal cops, cops killing people drunk, and it just rolls along. It just rolls along. And if you dare to say something, the council jumps all over you. I said, you know, you're putting a pool over there for various reasons. And Mr. Dangler goes after me like I, like I said something wrong. Really? I didn't say anything wrong. That whole pool is a disgrace.
Mr.
Okay, so I'm off the subject, right? Well, you know, I'm relating it to the firemen. To me, the firemen are running this city. I don't know how that ever happened. It's not funny. So, this is about, you're going to rearrange the way you hire, or the way you appoint volunteer firemen, chiefs, is that right? Is it about chiefs?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. And we know, we know, isn't the chief, one of the chiefs now, the one who's also a heavy equipment operator in Long Branch, that may have been responsible for running over a woman on the beach? Where did that ever go? How does Mr. Ghadetti just walk away from that? Isn't he the supervisor? Wasn't a woman run over on the beach with a tractor, almost killed? How come we don't hear about that? Can we still chief? How about the background with the Picatinny Arsenal and all those things? Where do you get these people from? I have no idea. You've got to start vetting people. And stop recycling bad people. They keep coming back, and they think everything is a joke. They come in here, they're laughing at you, they're laughing at us, and they think it's just a ball. Keep the times rolling, right? All of them, half your, half your staff up there are all with the firemen and holy, they're working against you, Mayor. Trust me. You had to see them in Wildwood. They're doing everything possible to undermine your thing. And it's mostly from the fire department and the police department. And you sit up there like it's, it's no big deal. I wouldn't sit near any of those people you're sitting with, including the attorney. Really, you know, you were elected to clean this city up. What are you going to do? Recycle these people now? Now you're going to bring back chiefs that nobody else wants? They've been thrown out of other departments. They're a disgrace. They're horrible police officers sometimes also. And what do you reward them with? You make them chiefs so they could go to Jack's Bar and do what they like to do, get drunk and kill people. And assault people. And assault Long Branch heroes, by the way. And assault their children. And they're all descendants of the West End Six. And what are you going to do about it? Put them back on the department again. Look at them here, laughing. They think it's a joke. You all should be ashamed of yourself.
I need a motion to close.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the third reading of ordinance 1720 entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter 45 Fire Department of the Code of the City of Long Branch. I need a motion to adopt on the third and final reading advertised according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Ordinance for introduction, we have none. Public portion and reg, public participation and resolution for general comment?
So moved. Second.
I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone in the audience has a comment to make, please step to the microphone, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
My name's Lori Dalton. I live at 455 Atlantic Avenue. And I'm reading here on the agenda how the mayor, council, and administration of the city of Long Branch are committed to cultivating an environment of mutual trust and respect. I don't understand how we can do that when you sign a deal behind a closed door how we can do that when you sign a deal behind a closed door to build a pool at Pleasure Bay in exchange for a tax abatement in Ocean Gate. The last mayor refused to give him a tax abatement, instead offering the developer a density bonus. Yet, Mr. Pallone, even after you said since taking office July first, we have had several discussions from developers who are interested in a tax abatement. Pallone said, "We made it clear that is not an option." And then you turn around and you do just that. So now you're, my other concern was this week's link. A lot of speakers felt the pool had a lot to offer the community. They said it could bring people closer together and help the businesses and encourage more development in the neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood. There's no businesses. It's houses, and you're still building on Green Acres property. Right off the website, "A local government unit or nonprofit seeking departmental approval for the proposed construction of a building on funded parkland shall at least ninety days before appeal, approval of the proposed construction by its governing body submitted Green Acres a written request for approval of proposed construction." Has that been done?
I don't think this is funded parkland.
It's Green Acres. I have it right here.
Green Acres has funded and unfunded parkland.
Okay. So it's listed right here under Green Acres.
Correct.
Okay, it doesn't specify, okay? You also can't limit it to just residents. It has to be open to the public. Seven-three-six dash twenty-five point one, public access to use, to use of funded parkland. You can't discriminate against residency. So how are we gonna build a Long Branch-only pool in a flood plain? There's a creek. My very first house that I bought was right across the street from this park. I sold it just before you made that reclamation center. When I first moved there, we would look to make bets on how high the garbage for the water line would come up our front lawn, until Long Branch ran a pipe under Atlantic Avenue, under the park, to the river. Now that creek is still open by the reclamation center. I don't know how much crap gets washed down there, but you're trying to build, I have another map that shows it's, it's Tidelands. Tidelands Limited. How are you gonna build a pool? You talk about extending the parking for safety to the kids, but you're gonna have them cross your line. I mean, I had a student, regular ed, who came home from school, crossed your line, got hit, was left on the side of the road for dead. Now she's in special ed. Do you, how many kids do you want to die trying to cross your line in the summer? I don't understand why you didn't even look at Jerry Morgan Park, which is plenty of property. They've got basketball, they've got playground, they've got a tennis court, and the Bucky James Community Center is right across the street. So when kids are done doing stuff there, they can walk across the street safely to go to a pool. I, I, I don't understand. You're, are you gonna be condemning my property now because you're gonna encourage businesses and development? Nothing? Okay, thank you. I have my CAFRA request. It should be, my OPA request. I should have my answers by tomorrow. Thank you for your time.
Request one-minute notification. Vincent Lapore, thirty-three, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. That was a substantive presentation by Ms. Dalton. Part for the course, the governing body was lacking in addressing it. Same old, same old. Avery Grant. Chamber of Commerce on March twentieth will be awarding Mr. Grant the humanitarian award. It's a nice honor. Mr. Grant, you're in the audience. Your service to this community equals that to your service to this country, which was above and beyond the call of duty. None in this city are far more deserving for the charity you have provided it. You're going out of your way to help everyone and everything. You most deserve this award, Mr. Grant. Mr. Grant, the times, I've known you for many years, and I just wanna say from time to time, I've stated to you, I don't think this city fully appreciates you or what you do for it, but it's nice that the chamber is now giving you the humanitarian award. As you recall, Mr. Grant, at the last council meeting, you held true to your campaign pledge, and you stood up here and you expressed dissent over the tax abatements as you campaigned, unlike the Pallone team, which lied and backstabbed the people and gave a tax abatement against their campaign platform. I also stood at that meeting, Mr. Grant. Mr. Grant, I was very proud that evening, after all these years to have known you, unlike Team Pallone. Mr. Grant, you have always been a man of your word. You stayed true to your platform, and you have always done right for the people. I recall at the last council meeting, councilwoman Vogt, your closing remarks at the council meeting in defense of ordinance thirteen twenty for the tax abatements, quote, "We do look at and think about what some of the campaign promises were. Let's think about all of the campaign promises and what they were," end quote. Miss Vogt, I was very disappointed in that statement. I believe you're in the wrong profession. You could have been a butcher, because you put your thumb on the scale. The major campaign platform of Team Pallone was no tax abatement. And Miss Vogt, you voted twice yes on tax abatements as a councilwoman. At the last meeting, Mr. Viera, you stated you sleep well at night with the decisions you make for the city. Mr. Viera, most conditioned liars will sleep well at night.
Mr. Lapore, you have one minute.
Thank you. Ms. Selly. You told me that I could not stand in this room and make a point about referring to liars and pointing to an individual. Ms. Selly, that night perhaps was the worst night I've ever had in this council room. I looked at you with ashes on your head, and those ashes are about truth and honesty of a religious institution. And yet that night, you cast a vote for a tax abatement, and you lied and backstabbed the people. So Ms. Selly, I will make it known at Holy Trinity Church what you're about and the hypocrisy you represent. And you see this little rulebook that you said, "I can't point at you and call you a liar"? This rulebook has nothing in it about calling people a liar or pointing.
Thank you, Mr. Lapore.
Ms. Selly, you're a liar. Ms. Selly, you're a backstabber. Make my day, Selly. What are you gonna do about it?
Linda Swinby, and I reside at one fifty-seven Seventh Avenue. And I, I, since the last meeting, I've been thinking a lot about what I, certain things that I said, and I do feel like I need to, I want to, I don't have to, but I want to apologize to Mayor, Council, Mr. Dangler. Um, there were some things that I said that I kinda like finger pointed, and I didn't, not certain things, and I didn't mean to, but I publicly apologizing. Um, what I said, I meant what I said, but I need to say it in a different way than the way I said. And that will be in the next meeting, that I will say what, continue saying what I said in a different way, though, because what, I got to thinking, and it's on the video, and I got to examining. To me, it was, wasn't the best words that I could have said. I meant, you know, just in the certain things that I did say, that I could have said a little better, and I do apologize to everybody that was there, you know, even in the audience and everything, so, but I do, because the reason I'm apologizing is because there was things that after the meeting that were said, that were put on Facebook about me and, um, which, well, can believe what they wanna believe and whatever, uh, but it wasn't me. It wasn't anything, I wasn't calling the mayor and the council divisive or anything like that, and that's why I'm apologizing, because I have no problem with the mayor and your council members. So leave it at that. But I'll be back in two weeks to continue where I left off, in a positive way, not negative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Linda? Thank you for the apology. Certainly not necessary. We didn't take it personal, but we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, Ernest McNolley. Born in Long Branch. I live in Asbury Park. Uh, I'd like to start out by saying that, uh, the thing with the pool and the tax abatements, I think it speaks for itself. There are a lot of people who are privy to the developers in Long Branch, who are privy to the meetings that were had, they're privy to the, why it was kind of planned the way it was. It's very odd that you put a pool for certain residents two miles or more from the beach, and you claim that it's there to teach them how to swim, when in fact, anyone who was born in Long Branch learned to swim in the ocean, either through seashore day camp or through Kramer or Chelsea Pool. We walked into the tunnel, and they taught us how to swim in the ocean. And now you're trying to sell us on this thing that, oh, it's for the kids, you know, it's for the, over in the hot mosquito vermin section next to a dump, right? And why do you do it? So that a developer can build extra units on, now on the west side of Ocean Boulevard. So the creeping has begun, and by the creepy developers. It's, it's, now it's going across the street. And, and then when we bring up the fact that it's, it's demographically or racially charged, you come at us like gangbusters. Everybody, everybody in the state is talking about it. And you notice how things are now starting to come out, how these projects happen without CAFRA permits, without flood permits, without demographic studies, et cetera. Look at Long Beach Island now. What'd they do? They built a hotel, right, near the bridge, right? No CAFRA permit, no flood permit, no nothing. They just built it, sort of like how Pure Village got built. Really? Everybody knew, taking homes for homes is not really what eminent domain is about, but you had genius lawyers here, genius lawyers, who figured out a way to throw everybody out and build multimillion-dollar homes, not for the people of Long Branch. People of Long Branch who shed their blood and wanted to probably end their life where they were living, got thrown out in the street, and you all think it's, proud of it. And really, the remnants on this council was with the twenty-eight-year reign of Mayor Schneider, who with the council, uh, Ann Selgram Aaron and Mr. Aaron engineered that whole thing. And I don't mean literally engineered it, but figured out a way that, you know what, let's throw everybody out, let's build it, and then when they bring us to court and find out it was illegal, we'll pay the fine, and what are you gonna do? Hence the creation of, I don't know what you wanna call Ocean Boulevard now. If you all are proud of that, could anybody be proud of, riding down Ocean Boulevard? Who would be proud of that? That's a shameful thing that everybody should be ashamed of, that everybody made a lot of money on. Can I get a one-minute, uh?
Yes.
Thank you. That everybody should be absolutely ashamed of, demographically, racially, socioeconomically, educationally. It is a disgrace. And who's modeling after it now? Asbury Park, my city. Everybody wants to be like Long Branch. Developers rule. Developers go to jail, then they come out and they make more deals. Then they get locked up again, they come out and they make more deals. Then they figure out how to take it away from the residents of Long Branch or Asbury and give it to these three-month people that come from who knows where, Brooklyn, here, there, everywhere else. The rest of us, taxes go up, the schools are dangerous. Look, look at what's going on in the schools. Come on. Look, look at who you have in these schools. I mean, does anybody vet who you, do I, did you give me the one-minute warning?
Not yet, sir.
Oh, thank you. Uh, okay. So, uh, I think enough said about that, but, but let me also say, this thing that you're doing with these firemen and these police, and not really police and anybody, it's out of control. You know, you should go back to a public safety. Thank you. A public safety division, which we had, which you had here, public safety director and four captains. This thing is not gonna work, certainly not with who's at the helm now. Now, I don't know what the deal is. People say that everybody's got everything on everybody else in, in Long Branch, meaning, well, we got films about you, we got films about you, so if we don't get promoted, we're gonna show the films about you, and if we don't get fifty new fire trucks, we're gonna expose, so that's what you have here. And who's suffering? Everybody west of Ocean Boulevard is suffering. The taxes are out of control, crime. It's the twenty-fifth most dangerous place in New Jersey by, by Attorney General statistics of five hundred and sixty-five. What is everybody proud of? What is the former police chief from Eaton Town, the now business manager, proud of? This is a crime city. You bring in a, an ex-police chief, you think maybe he'd beef up the Police Department and clean up the Fire Department?
Thank you, Mr. McNolley.
Sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Bill Germanos, six hundred Russell Avenue.
Sir, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you. Sir, I'm, I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
Bill Germanos, six hundred Russell Avenue, Long Branch. Y'all?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to go. I was talking to my friends, talking about chief and all the kind of stuff, everybody. Three people that are gonna go to jail. Robert Jason, Alan Snyder, and Muro Alfondo. Three bad people in Long Branch. They gotta go to jail. That's it. That's my limit. And Robert, hide. I don't know where to hide. I'm gonna get you, Robert, one way or the other. You know that way in jail. I talked already, Freehold, you say bring him over here and we'll put him in jail. You belong in jail, Robert. You can't hide no more, you piece of garbage. Come over here, face me. You know, I can't go after you. You run too fast. I don't have, I have two bad legs. I can't do that. So if you have a guts, come face me, and I want you in jail. You, your father Snyder, and your partner Muro Alfondo, the three Musketeers, the three losers, and the city of Long Branch destroying this town. You know, you belong in jail, Robert, and you're gonna happy soon. Stop hiding, you know what I mean? Stop running away. One way or the other, I'm gonna catch you one of the days. If you not, stay politically, they come after you. Trust me. Okay? You can't harass me no more, you piece of garbage. Thank you very much, guys.
Have a motion to close the public portion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Under resolutions, we can take the list of resolutions by consent order, by consent agenda, with the exception of resolution R forty-five dash twenty, which is being pulled.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor, Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Under applications, we have none. Miscellaneous business for the good of the order. Councilman Viera.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for coming. I'd like to congratulate Will and Alex for a great job they do with the IT Department, and Sid Johnson for coming out and explaining pretty much with something that's becoming very serious, and we cannot take for granted that. And that's pretty much it, and thank you, and good night.
Councilwomen Vogt?
So, hello, everyone. I wanna talk about, um, two, two kind of really, I think, wonderful things. Um, one is I wanna recognize, and I hope I'm saying this name right, Eric Bachman, who works with our city planner, who, um, I think, um, took it upon himself to issue to us really wonderful reports of the work that's being done, uh, in that department in terms of addressing abandoned housing. And if you remember way back when, that was one of the things in our hundred-day report, in our hundred-day plan, that we wanted to address. He gives us these reports that are extraordinarily informative, extraordinarily upbeat, and just the whole way he has taken initiative in his job is just setting a wonderful example. So I just wanted to recognize him. Um, I wanted to also tell you, the next time you see, um, an advertisement for an event called Community Connect- I wanted to also tell you, the next time you see an advertisement for an event called Community Connections, make sure you go. Because it's sponsored by the Here's Task Force, which I think you probably know now is the mayor's task force on addiction. And it's the whole effort by that group to, again, eliminate the stigma, help people come forward, know what the resources are to deal with addiction, and move themselves for recovery. There are gonna be four Community Connection meetings this year. We just had the first one this past week. We filled the room in the Elks building. People told just amazing, heart-wrenching, and heart- heartwarming stories of how they found their way to recovery. It was a wonderful way to- for Long Branch to help address, first of all, the horrible opioid epidemic and the whole idea of people being afraid to step forward. So please, the next time you- you see an advertisement, and I'll- I'll announce it when the next one is being scheduled, step- step forward to help people deal- deal with that, to help Long Branch deal with that. And then just the last thing I wanna say is, be safe, be well. Thanks to Sid for doing that presentation, very informative and helpful. We all need to take care of ourselves and take care of each other, so stay well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Selly?
Tonight, we had two of our IT specialists, one the director and one- one of the people who works with him. He's the one who keeps us all in the city and the right pocket, and that we do the right thing in the taking care of our computers. And I personally would like to thank them very much. Mr. Johnson, your presentation was outstanding. And for those of us that didn't know, now we do know. So I certainly do thank you for that. And that's all I have. Except there's St. Patrick's Day next week, don't forget.
Mayor Pallone?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening and for your comments. Sid, thanks for informing the community about what's going on with us. And I'd also like to congratulate Alex and Will. I just wanted to let a few notes here. We'd like Long Branch residents to know that we are currently hiring for summer positions. These positions include park cleaners, beach ticket attendants, recreation leaders, lifeguards, and beach cleaners. For more information, please go to our website, www-longbranch.org. Also, you can still sign up for Shop Long Branch Card at the Public Library, City Hall, Community Development Office, Senior Center, Recreation Department, Chamber of Commerce, BR Help Center, and finer detail. This is a free and easy program where you can get a property tax credit when you shop at participating stores in Long Branch. And finally, we're hearing a lot about the census. The 2020 Census is looking for workers to keep an accurate count of the town's population. Census results determine the number of seats each state has in the U.S. House of Representatives, as well as how funds are spent on roads, schools, hospitals, almost any federal funding that you can think of. It offers a very good salary, flexible hours, and a weekly paycheck. You can apply at 2020census.gov/jobs. That's 2020census.gov/jobs. So again, thank you all for coming out this evening, and have a great week.
Thank you. On this past Friday, March sixth, Long Branch had a 2020 Census Summit at the Bucky James. Several organizations co-partnered and were represented. We had over a hundred residents, including two busloads of middle school and high school students come and be a part of the- part of the half a day just to get information on how important the 2020 Census is. So we will be doing more events in the coming weeks, so we will certainly keep you posted through social media. Sid, today, on my job, we had, because I'm part of the union there, we had the update, if you will, on the coronavirus. But I would like to say that you were much more, much, much more informative. You kept it basic, but you also let it know how serious it could be. So I do appreciate the job that you did. And anyone that's gonna be enjoying St. Patrick's Day, just watch the public drinking, unless you're in Belmar. Have a good day, and God bless you all. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Grant, and I have to agree with Mr. Lapore. Your- your being honored is certainly well overdue. Congratulations. Have a- a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?